Okay, now we'll move on to our regular agenda item cases. We have two for Axon. Agenda item number three, general plan amendment 3 GP 2023 and agenda item number four, a zoning district map amendment 13 ZN 2020 number two.
Thank you Chair Higgs and Commissioners. Greg Bloomberg with current planning here to give you a presentation, one presentation on those two items, cases 3 GP 2023 and case 13 ZN 2020 number two for the Axon campus. The site is located, occupies about 43-plus acres at the southeast corner of Hayden and the 101. The campus site altogether is about 68 acres, so the area that's not included in this application is the east portion of the campus of the site, which was previously approved under case 13 ZN 2020 for the actual headquarters building. So there's two different requests associated, actually three, associated with this project. Two of those requests are minor amendments. One is to the general plan and the other is to the greater airpark character area plan. The current land use designation for the acreage in question in the general plan is employment on light industrial office. If this request is approved, the land use designation would be a change to mixed-use And for the greater airpark character area plan, it's a little small on the screen, but the land use designation, as with the general plan, is currently employment. If this request is approved, the land use designation will be changed to airpark mixed-use And then the zoning application itself, presently the site is zoned I-1 PCD, light industrial, planned community district. And if this request is approved, the zoning would change to planned community district, planned airpark core, which is PCP, airpark mixed-use residential, which is the AMUR. So I've got a few slides here just to give you a summary of the requests and some background. As I mentioned, minor amendment to the general plan 2035 to change the land use designation from employment to mixed-use neighborhoods. A minor amendment to the greater airpark character area plan to change the land use designation from employment to airpark mixed-use residential. A rezone from PC I-1 to PC PCP AMUR. And the request, the development plan before you includes 1,975 multifamily residential units, plus or minus 47,000 square feet of commercial space, as well as a hotel. When the original case came in in 2020, the crossroads master plan prohibited residential in this area, so this request would be to allow that residential to occur at this location. There is also a transition area just north of the Stonewood 2 community called the Crossroads Hayden Core Transition Area. That is part of the crossroads master plan. And the original zoning case from 2002 restricted the use of land uses in that area, which is the rectangle about the size, the width of the subdivision, to only those uses in the I-1 district. The applicant is seeking to obviously eliminate that use restriction in that area to allow for the residential and the hotel. Residential density, for a PCP zoning, there's no density requirement or a density minimum or maximum. It's all based on floor area ratio, but in the interest of providing as much information as possible, we calculated the density and it calculates out to plus or minus 46 dwelling units per acre. The request would increase the overall residential unit count in the crossroads master plan, which is about 1,000 acres, from 6,969 units to 8,944 units. The existing maximum height on the Axon site from the 2020 zoning case was 82 feet for the Axon building itself, which is not changing, and 52 feet for all other buildings. The proposed maximum height within the development plan area, again, the Axon building is excluded, would be 67 feet. The planned community district does allow for an applicant to apply for amendments to the PC comparable zoning district. In this case, that's the PCP zoning. And the applicant is only proposing one amendment to the PCP district. There is a limitation on residential on the ground floor of the development planned area, 50%. The applicant is seeking to increase that to allow 67% of the ground floor to be residential. Since the original initial proposal, I just wanted to point out a few changes that have occurred, and I'll show those to you in the following slides. The number of units has been reduced from an initial request of 2,552 units to 1,975 units. The hotel was originally located at the southeast corner of the development plan area. It has since been relocated to the northeast corner, and that was, I think, believe, one of the requests of the neighborhood to the south. The height of the building closest to the single-family community to the south has been reduced. It was originally five stories, it's now three stories. And I'll show that location to you in a moment, and I believe that was also a request of the neighbors to the south. And the applicant has added a multi-use path around the entire campus perimeter that is, you know, plus or minus one mile that would be publicly accessible. So this is the site plan as proposed. Again, the eastern third or so is already entitled, that's the Axon headquarters with the parking. And then, there's six buildings altogether as part of this application. And the building that I mentioned, two buildings I want to talk about, this is the first one. This is the one closest to the residential that I mentioned. That was originally five stories, and that's now three stories. It went from 67 feet down to 45 feet. And then the hotel is now here, and this was originally down in this area. So the hotel is now here, closer to the headquarters. Primary access would be off of Axon. Axon Way would be developed or would be constructed by the developer, all the way down to Perimeter Drive, and there would also be access off of 82nd Street. And then this is totally separate but related, a future fire station, which has already been before you. Municipal use master site plan and the development review board have approved that. This is the circulation plan, and one of the things I just wanted to point out on this was that path I was telling you about, the multi-use path, which basically traverses the entire perimeter of the development and would be, you know, a pretty nice amenity for not only employees or residents of the site, but also potentially for the public. This is the landscape and open space plan. Each of the buildings has its own courtyard, including the hotel, and there is a pretty evenly distributed open space throughout the site. There is, one of the things that the original zoning case required was some enhanced landscaping down in this area here, because of its close proximity to the neighborhood. The applicant agreed to that back in 2020, that hasn't changed. There will be enhanced landscaping in this area, consisting of mature trees and so on, to provide some visual relief. The Airport Advisory Commission considered this case on January 17th, last Wednesday. They recommended a recommendation of denial by unanimous vote of seven to nothing, citing the number of proposed residential units and the incompatibility with airport operations. That concludes staff's presentation. I would normally suggest, if there's any immediate questions for me, that I'd be available to answer those, but there's quite a few people here to speak, and I believe the applicant also has the presentation, so I would suggest maybe we defer questions until after the presentation and public comment.
I agree. Thank you. Mr. Hulman Mantle?
Thank you. Charles H. Mantle on behalf of Axon. It's probably going to be a somewhat long evening. We have a number of folks here, you're going to notice a lot of yellow in the audience. It's maybe indicative of the logo from Axon. Not everyone's going to speak today, we have a number of people we've selected to speak. I suspect this is going to be a situation where there's a rebuttal as well, and so we may ask additional people to speak as new topics come up. But I'd like to talk to you about our campus. And if I could just ask the people from Axon to raise their hands, just so you get a sense of who's here from Axon. We've been in Scottsdale for a long time, we're super proud to be here. Our goal is to build a campus that allows us to expand. You may know what we do, we hope that you all know what we do, probably most famous for the taser and the body cam, and I think almost everybody on this commission, if not everybody, was on the commission when we first went through. I think there's one exception. So I won't go into all the detail about what we do, but we're passionate about what we do, and we're passionate that we've been able to change the world really from Scottsdale. And we want to continue to do that, but we have some challenges. And growing isn't easy, and while our product has been incredibly successful, we need more space to do that. And the space that we've been in for many, many years is something we've simply outgrown. In fact, we've outgrown the building we're in, and the building next to that, and the building down the street from that, and at some point, it's not effective for us. And so, once upon a time, we were actually looking to go somewhere else, and the city said, please don't go, we want you to stay. And so, we worked with the city and many of you to build a new headquarters campus. And the first phase, we were lucky enough, and I say that sarcastically, to sort of develop during the pandemic, which is a rough time. And so, we've had to make a number of changes over time. Let me just see if I can... This is the building that we have proposed and that you've approved. We'd like to build this now, but simply put, we're worried. And we're worried that we can't grow adequately in this campus. We're worried that there isn't enough housing. I'm going to try to make some decisions here. I noticed I have 10 minutes. Am I going to be kept to the 10 minutes, or do I have a little more time if I ask some of the people not to speak today?
You can go a minute or two over if you need to, yeah.
Thanks. I'm going to move through some of these because Greg has covered them, and some of them are things you've seen before. But the piece is roughly 70 acres, and so when you look at density and you talk about the number of units, we want you to keep in mind that it's over an entire campus. We want you to keep in mind that we continue to grow and that we can't really grow adequately without having the housing. We have heard lots of discussion about other things, like hospitals coming around us. We see on a regular basis newspaper articles, which I'm going to go to in a second, talking about, in any given week, you can open up a paper here and talk about the housing crisis. We believe there is a housing crisis, but even if you don't, the people that we're recruiting and trying to retain believe that, because they see it all the time. In fact, I think you'll hear from some of the speakers that they've even experienced it. And we're not asking you to solve that problem for us. Some might come here and say, there's a housing problem, why don't you fix that for us? We're not saying that. In fact, we're saying exactly the opposite. We're saying, we want to be here, we want to build our future here. Let us do that. We have the land, we have the resources, let us fix the problem that we see. Because without it, it's dangerous for us to continue to bring new employees if they don't have places to live. Without it, we won't get the best employees, because they won't have somewhere to live. Many employees are happy of companies living far away and doing far commutes, that really doesn't fit our profile. We hire some of the best employees in the world. You'll hear from some of them today, you'll probably speak to some of them after. You'll be impressed, I'll be disappointed if you're not. But hiring the best means providing a great environment. And if any of you have been, and I think a few of you have probably over time been to our existing headquarters, it's very futuristic, and we spent a lot of money making it a great place to be. And that's part of the reason too, we're trying to hire and retain the best talent in the world. And to do that, we have to create an environment to do that. What we're asking to do is build a campus. We're asking to bring a hotel to the campus. The building that we're proposing is a five-story atrium, and we're going to, instead of doing conferences all over the place, we're going to bring them to Scottsdale. The five-story atrium will work for us to do training, to do presentations, to hold conferences for law enforcement. And to do that, we also need some hotel space. And so, we have proposed a hotel on the campus. Now, originally, as you heard from staff, we proposed that hotel next to the neighbors. And one of the things we heard at the neighborhood meeting is, they didn't want, in that lower area, they didn't want the hotel next to them. We had a five-story hotel proposed. And so, what we've done instead is moved the building from roughly 160 feet to over 400 feet away. We've made it residential instead of a hotel, and we've made it three stories instead of five. We moved the hotel further to the north. That hotel still serves us, maybe not as well, but it's a compromise we were willing to make, to try to make this a great situation for everyone. You're going to hear from speakers from both sides tonight. Everybody here loves Scottsdale, everyone here is passionate about staying and finding a way to work together. The site's not going to be vacant, it's an industrial site now. If we don't build our headquarters, it's likely to be a far more industrial site around, and you'd lose things like our expanded landscape areas and some of the other benefits that I'll get into. There's been a lot of discussion about how fast this comes, and so I want to hit this right away. We're proposing 1,975 units, and that seems to have people concerned. We believe that over the time of our campus, which we expect to be generations, this is not a 10-year project for us, this is a 100-year project for us, or longer, we're going to continue to need housing. As we grow, we need places for our people to be. You can't continue to bring jobs without having places for them to stay. We think that the best place to have these employees live is right near campus and right near the freeway. We think that helps. They're going to be, if we continue to bring jobs, they're going to be somewhere better to have them by us. It's also why we're building retail, so that the residents have amenities, which also we think benefit the neighbors, including the running track and some of the other amenities. But we're proposing now to build 525 of the units and the hotel. As soon as we pull permits for the, as soon as we pull permits for the headquarters, we'll be allowed to proceed with the first 525 residential units and the 425 hotel rooms. A year later, we're saying that we would be eligible to do another 500 units. And then 950 of the units for us are down the road. We want the right to do that now, we want the right to continue to grow in the future, but we're going to set that off five years from the approval date. And so, as you sort of analyze the impact of the project, it's 500 in the 425 hotel units, 500 a year later, and then 950 five years later. Again, this shows the 440 feet versus the much, much closer distance we provided originally. If this were an industrial project, we wouldn't have to do this, but we're trying to be sensitive to the neighbors next to us. Again, we've moved a five-story building to a three-story building and moved it 440 feet, which is a pretty significant difference in distance. The number of amenities that we've included, we've included a mile and a half running trail that will be used for our employees, the residents, but also nearby residents. It won't be just our employees. Likewise, we're including a dog park. We think that that should be open as well to others. We'll maintain it, but others will have the advantage of using it. We've got fitness stations throughout the running course, again, open to others, not just our residents and employees. Again, many of those residents will actually be employees, so they'll spend quite a bit of time on the campus. We have significantly enhanced landscape buffers. It's worth noting that what we've done is an expanded landscape buffer, an opportunity for a pedestrian path, more landscaping, vehicles including bike lanes, a median with landscaping, another vehicle lane with biking, another landscape buffer, then another pedestrian path, then another buffer. So we have significantly landscaped the space between us and the residents to the south We've already donated, or dedicated, I should say, to the city nearly 15 acres. We've already dedicated rights of way for the street, as well as the fire station and the water treatment facility. We did that right away to assist the city. I know I'm almost out of time here, I know I have an opportunity to rebut some of the comments, but if I can just finish up here. We've also provided shaded elements throughout the project. I think that they really help not only connect the residents and the employees to the workplace, but also it'll be used for others who just want a quiet place to be, and certainly assist in activating our retail space. We're also adding significant infrastructure, which we think will help the entire area. We're adding significant water and sewer, and as Scottsdale grows, those things will be important. We're also doing them now so that it will reduce the interruption people will feel later on in life as Scottsdale continues to grow, surely it will. We're also providing a traffic signal, which will work to solve some of the existing traffic problems, as well as a hawk, which will help connect pedestrians to our site as we bring in a retail experience, which in our case is most likely just restaurants. We're committed to quality architecture. We're going to have a modern design of sorts. For those of you who haven't seen our headquarters, I'm happy to go back and show it on rebuttal. But we know that this is an area that's important to the city. One of the images was white. I have to acknowledge that we know Scottsdale probably doesn't want a white apartment building, and we're willing to work on the colors. But the design of the apartments will be more modern in nature. It's important to understand that they're the entrance way to our headquarters, and so we're going to spend a lot of time on the design and make sure that the design is appropriate for the area. I know I'm out of time now, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. And typically, we would give the commissioners a chance to ask questions of the applicant, but I do want to be mindful of all of the citizens that have taken their time to come and are willing to speak. So I think we're going to get through those first, and then that will give you a chance to respond and have us ask questions as well.
Perfect.
Thank you. Thank you. So with that, we do have quite a few requests to speak. The first one, we have someone that has, three other people that have dedicated or requested to dedicate their time to her, which means she gets one additional minute for each one of those individuals. I don't know if there's anyone else that has, that are, that know others that are here and want to have somebody speak on their behalf, but that's always an option as well, just to keep that in mind. But we will start with Susan McGary. And she'll be speaking on behalf of those three other individuals. So you have six minutes. Please state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Susan McGary. I live at 8074 East Teresa Drive, Scottsdale. I'm a naturally anxious and nervous presenter, so I am going to read my comments to you tonight. I am the president of the HOA of Scottsdale Stonewood 2. We are a well-established, single-family home community immediately south of the land in question. We are here to oppose all of Axon's requests. Axon purchased this land from the State Land Trust under specific zoning restrictions and in hand with a development agreement that prohibits residential use. The price Axon paid for the land was based upon industrial zoning, the value of which is a fraction of the value of the land had it been zoned for residential. Axon tends to make a lot of money off the back of the city if this is rezoned. Axon's requests run contrary to Scottsdale's vision and fly directly into the face of the city's image. Building a small, self-contained city on a small parcel of land for the complete financial benefit of one company is not sound planning. Also, Axon has not demonstrated in any way how the development would benefit the community, the city, the surrounding area, or area, or anyone besides Axon. They talk about needing rental housing for their employees, there's plenty of available rental housing. That's not an argument that holds water. They say they need their own hotel to conduct their secret conversations. They deliberately mislead in their filing when they say that the development would be compatible with the surrounding area, which includes above all, our single-family established neighborhood. Clear benefits to the city and to voters are never mentioned. This is not a NIMBY case, we realize this property will be developed, but we want it to be a fair and appropriate development to the space. I'm going to show you a density graphic I have. Is that good? Oh. How's that? This is a density comparison between the land in question, the San Artis Apartments across Hayden, the north-south street you see is Hayden, and our neighborhood to the south of the land. All of these parcels, although it doesn't really look like it on this, are approximately the same acreage, somewhere in the neighborhood of 30 net. Ours is listed as gross because of unable to back out streets and such, but generally the same size. And you can see by the comparison, as far as the density and the outrageous density proposed is 12 times greater than our neighborhood and four times greater than San Artis, which is three stories high. And I want to show you what that looks like in our neighborhood. This is our neighborhood. See the street cars, cars parked in the street? This is our neighborhood. This is San Artis, across a four-to-six-lane road that Hayden is. This is how high it is in our neighborhood. The neighbors on this side of the community have these apartment residents looking into their backyards, probably into their living rooms and their bedrooms. It's unacceptable. This caught us off-guard, we're not going to be caught off-guard again. Again, this is three stories. Thank you. I've got a couple more things. It took me about 40 minutes to get here today from my home. Should have taken me 20 minutes. The excessive, already crowded North Scottsdale streets would be flooded with thousands upon thousands of additional vehicles. Apartment dwellers would see into the rest of our yards, living rooms, and bedrooms. We would lose the quiet enjoyment of our homes, which we have worked so hard for. I understand that Axon is applying pressure to win approval. The lines have been blurred between Axon the company and the overall impacts of this proposed development. Axon is attempting to hold the city hostage by saying or implying it will move elsewhere if its requests are denied. Please don't give in to what many are calling political blackmail. Oh, and on the whole, it's possible voters don't care at all whether Axon stays or goes. If you haven't seen this opinion piece, it appeared yesterday. I'm just showing you the headline. It's a small poll, it's a legitimate poll by a legitimate pollster that found up to 70% of those voters responding were against this Axon proposal. Let me add again that we understand the property will be developed at some point. We believe there is a place for development. We, but, the location needs to be appropriate and the density needs to be reasonable. That's not the case here. I have a couple of responses to the presentation just made, just quickly.
Ms. McGary, you are past your six-minute time, if you could just quickly close up on that comment.
Oh, that's great. Oh, that's great. Could I have everybody from Scottsdale-Stonbrook II raise your hands or stand up? This is a huge turnout for us.
I still don't know how many people. I don't know who raised their hand, who submitted something. It's who has cards up here that are donating the time is my question. Yeah, I've got comments coming in from every direction. We have three people. I don't I'm not sure who those people are. Okay, your name? This is a mess.
Mr. Curtis, while she's doing that, can you clarify for us how many donated minutes can be applied to a speaker?
Up to 10. Up to 10. Up to 10 minutes.
Okay.
So we can have we can have four more. I don't
Oh, thank you.
See a grace here. Well, I guess we'll go ahead and we'll figure it. We'll figure out those four people in a minute. Go ahead and continue.
Okay. I've already seen or heard much of the presentation from Axon, but there were a couple of things that stood out to me. This proposal is not for 70 acres. Axon purchased 70 acres, but the net acreage on this is 30 to 32 acres. So that's misleading. We're not talking about density on that whole 70 acres. We're talking about a density that Greg offered was more or less 46 dwelling units per acre. Also, our neighborhood is lucky to live just immediately north on the south side. I mean, yeah, north, but on the south side of our neighborhood, we're adjacent to the Scottsdale Sports Complex, about 72 acres of grass. We don't care about a path. We don't need dog parks. We love our park, and we don't need any help on that from Axon. This is not a 100-year proposal or whatever that reference was that was made. Company might think it's going to be around that long, and maybe they will be, but that is irrelevant to this presentation, and that number should be disregarded. Also, the landscape buffers, they're not going to hide this development from our neighborhood, most of which are single-family, single-story homes. I mean, you can't hide this development from anyone. Thank you for your time.
Okay. So, thank you for presenting and for everyone's willingness to have her speak on your behalf. I have, according to addresses, Catherine Daly, Lee Martucci, Leslie Lerman. I'm not sure. I can't understand you. I'm sorry. Yeah, I understand. Okay. Sure, I'm not sure who you are. I'm sorry. Catherine. Okay, sure, go ahead, Catherine. Yes, I was trying to figure out who it was that was donating their time, but why don't you go ahead and speak. Please state your name and address, and you have three minutes. Thank you.
I'm Catherine Daly, and I live in the Scottsdale-Stonbrook II development. My address is 8117 East Teresa Drive. I moved here from Chicago, and I came to Scottsdale for a reason because of the beautiful planning, especially in Scottsdale North, and the lack of density that, you know, we suffered under in Chicago, which is always on the news. So you know what the result of that is. And it's also a place that doesn't protect property rights. And here, I'm looking for a place that protects our property rights. And that's one of the reasons I came to Arizona and left Illinois. And I would like to say that you don't changing the zoning, the existing zoning, which is in the Crossroads East Plan, which is the plan that was in place when I bought my property. I knew there was a vacant lot there, and I knew what it was potentially used for, and I knew what the restrictions are, and I'm okay with that. But the density and the height that's being proposed is far outside of those planned uses, which also included, by the way, a very large, significant area that's called a transition area that's next to residential property. And in the Crossroads East Plan, many of the residential areas like Greyhawk and Princess have these buffer zones. They were put in place by the planners to give wide berth to adjacent non-residential properties so that the community's life and quiet existence was preserved. But all of this plan unfortunately flies in the face of that. We don't have a problem with Axon. I love business. There's a lot of property available to do this sort of thing that does not impinge upon the residential communities. It's been there since 1995. And they knew what the zoning was when they bought the property, and they knew what the restrictions were. And I knew what the restrictions were, and I knew how it could be used. And I bought my property. That's part of my property right. They bought their property. Development within that context is part of their property right, all for it. But changing it to this extent is not minor. It's a big deal. And I do not support it. And I request that you do not support it in order to preserve what we have in Scottsdale and the reason that so many people are coming here. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Mr. Lee Martucci? Again, please state your name and address. You have three minutes.
Lee Martucci. I'm in Scottsdale-Stonbrook. I'm at 8133 East Teresa Drive. So, you know, as I see this here, there's four groups, and everybody wants to get what they want. You know, obviously, we want Axon to stay. We like Axon. They're a good employer. They employ a lot of people, and I'm sure that the employees here want Axon to stay too. There's jobs on the line. So yes, we want that. Scottsdale wants revenues. They always want revenues, and that's important. The thing that's missing here is what we've been talking about is protecting the neighbors as well, the neighborhood. There's ways to do this much more appropriately so that we both protect the neighbors, our neighborhood, and we protect the jobs with Axon, and then Axon makes the money that they need to make. I feel like this is driven by the opportunity for Axon to make more money, and I get it. Businesses are in business to make money. But we also have to be good neighbors. And when I look at the plan, the plan, and I look at the road plan, it looks to me like there wasn't a lot of concern about traffic patterns and how it impacts our neighborhood. If you look at that plan, the way it is now, traffic is going to come up 82nd Street, which is our access to our neighborhood, and Mayo's going to be shut off, which is our other access in the neighborhood. So what's that going to look like on 82nd Street? It's going to get very busy. There's better ways to do the traffic plan, to bring it into the campus without impacting negatively impacting our properties. And oh, by the way, we're that other party that also wants to protect property values. Whoever's the homeowner here knows that and understands that. So that's what I'm concerned about is the traffic pattern. I understand the hotel, by the way. I work for a large company, and we bring people in all the time. Hotels, probably good. The other question I would like to ask, and this is a rhetorical question, is how many of the employees want to live right next to your campus? I know a lot of people. I know a lot of people who do not want to be walking distance from their campus, and I see hands going up. I know I wouldn't want to. So anyway, please reconsider this. We're against this current plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martucci. Next, we have Ms. Leslie Lerman. If you could please state your name and address. You have three minutes.
Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners, my name is Leslie Lerman. I own property at 8149 East Michelle in Stonbrook II. I also am concerned about the premises under which I purchased this property. I knew there was empty land right to the south, and our property faces that beautiful park. But I didn't know what was going to be done with it, so I made the effort to go down to the city planning and find out what was going to happen adjacent to the property and was assured that it was going to be a park. I didn't know there were going to be all of the lights and all of the traffic and all of the activity, but you know what? It's good for the area, and I support it. I supported it then. I would like to speak against the Axon plan as currently formulated. First of all, they characterized our neighborhood as townhomes, and as Susan, our HOA president, said, we're single-family homes, 2,000 square feet with yards back and front. We thought that we were moving to a nice neighborhood. We did not consider the fact that we were going to have the height of the buildings near us nor the density that's being proposed. Those are my two greatest objections to this plan. I don't know why Axon thinks we should be convinced that they need their own hotel. Seriously, if there's one thing Scottsdale has a lot of, it's hotels. And they can get meeting space anytime they want. So what this comes down to is greed. I'm just going to call it what it is. They got the property for approximately $150 million less than they would have had to pay if they disclosed that they intended to put housing on this land. I find it disingenuous that they didn't know from the very beginning that that wasn't really allowed. So I just ask you, Planning Commission, I realize that Axon is an important company to Scottsdale. They've been good neighbors, but they don't need to make this much money as a benefit of having bought land for their planned expansion. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe next up we have, is it Gail Howell? Ms. Howell, if you could please state your name and address. You have three minutes. Thank you.
Hello, Commissioners. My name's Gail Howell. I live at 8171 East Maria Drive in Stonbrook II. I've had the honor of living there for 28 years. So I'm kind of an original owner, and I've seen a lot of, obviously, development and changes around the area. One of the goals I noticed from the Transportation Commission was to emphasize traffic safety, livable streets, and multimodal community access. Makes sense to me. I want you to understand that 82nd Street is our only egress and ingress to get into our development. And 82nd Street, can you all see 82nd Street on the map? 82nd Street is considered a minor collector. That's two lanes with a center turn lane. We share that, 82nd Street, with, of course, all of our neighbors, 174 homes, which has, what, an average of two cars per household unless you have teenagers. We share it with the Cap Basin Soccer Park year-round activities for those upper soccer areas. We share it with the Animal Medical and Surgical Emergency Center, which is open 24/7, with their staff and patients, and the banks that go in their parking lot, because 82nd Street's easier than going through Pace Center or Perimeter. We share it with children, bicycles, dogs, people with strollers, walking the area, and we share it with the other vehicles that come off of Hayden or down Princess to hit 82nd Street in some way to get down to Princess Drive. So it's a really short little area. So I'm here to talk about 82nd Street. 82nd Street, as a minor collector, we to think of 1,975 apartments, hotel, retail space, going up 82nd Street. And I know Perimeter Drive is there. I understand there's other access, but at the top of 82nd Street, there's going to be a roundabout. Looking forward to that. And that roundabout will be carrying traffic. You think that you can keep people from not going on 82nd Street, or is your plan going to be widening that? Are we going to see that widened? And right now, we have green area from our neighborhood that we own. I mean, that's part of our green belt that we take care of, and then Pace Center next to us also. We read that Axon had done their own traffic study, and it was they felt that there was going to be 14,000 more car trips in our area daily. That feels overwhelming, and I would encourage you to vote not to have this rezoning and to keep it light industrial employment. Thanks.
Thank you for your time. I just want to make note, we still had a few cards that were coming in, and while we will give those people a chance to speak, we ask that cards are turned in before actual public testimony begins. So at this point, for this particular agenda item, we're going to stop receiving additional cards. And next up, we have Mr. Michael Zander. Mr. Zander, please state your name and address. You have three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. My name is Michael Zander, 8145 East Rita Drive in Scottsdale-Stonbrook II. I don't want to rehash all this. I'm just going to probably say the same things in different words. The first issue that I have is the stipulation that this was purchased with the notion that there would not be a residential development. That stipulation right there should negate the rezoning request. People have talked about density. There is two ways to define density, and one is the one that I would like to talk about is the one that's height equals density. The fact that they are talking about putting five-story apartment buildings is just too dense. Oh, by the way, I want to say a little sidebar. Mr. Smith, congratulations on what you've done, and your employees should be very pleased to be working at a firm like Axon. Very, very good. I'm in the financial services industry, and I followed your company since it was TASER, so good for you. However, you're not an apartment developer. So you have very good product, and thank you for keeping our country and the nation safe. The traffic increases, we experienced, all of us in North Scottsdale, two weekends in a row, experienced the 101 being closed. That in itself was extremely problematic. What made it less problematic was that we knew it was temporary and would only last. Boy, that's gone fast. Anyway, the problem with almost 2,000 apartments is that the traffic pattern will not be temporary. It will be permanent. So that's another problem. Going north out of our subdivision, we simply go north on 82nd and west to Hayden, and we're out of there. I'm a little bit concerned that if the traffic pattern, the streets are developed the way that they are, we to go north would have to go through the proposed development to get out of there to the north. That's a little bit disconcerting. So, as my time runs to an end, I hope that Axon will not use their billion-and-a-half dollars in sales and $16 market cap, $16 billion market cap, to bully the city of Scottsdale into an all-or-none thing where if they can't get their apartments built, they won't put their beautiful, beautifully designed international headquarters there. So my time is up, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Zander. Next, we have Ms. Rebecca Epner. Next, we have Ms. Rebecca Epner. Please state your name and address, you have three minutes. Thank you.
Hello, good evening. My name is Rebecca Epner. I am at 15446 North Greenway Hayden Loop. I'm a recent graduate from UCLA and moved to North Scottsdale back in August, very recently, to work at Axon. As a young person just beginning my career, I place extremely high value on living close to work. The benefits that I gain from seeing people face-to-face in the office every single day are invaluable. Axon has a very unique culture, one that encourages people to come together and one that I'm very, very proud to be a part of. I believe that expanding Axon's campus will further the fostering of this culture by bringing people physically closer together. Specifically, as someone who moved to town for work, not knowing anyone, not knowing anything about the city or where to live, housing in this sort of environment would have seemed quite attractive for me, as I know it would for many other recent graduates and really any individual, any young individual moving to Scottsdale for this company. Axon's an organization I'm beyond proud to work for and from what I can gather from my past few months here, it's part of the beating heart of Scottsdale. Expanding our campus to include the amenities discussed today will only help that heart beat stronger. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we have Mr. Bob Pedgman.
Thank you, Commissioners. Name is Bob Pedgman, address is on the record. And Axon is a great company and I happen to own the stock, it's on a tear, but this is not about the stock or the company, this is about development. And I would tell you that if you put this project on a ballot referendum, it would probably lose by about 80, 90% voting against it. And when I look at that recent poll that was put out at about 70% being opposed or something like that, all it takes is a little more education to the public and that's where it's going to end up. So I think this is one of those projects that really should be put on a referendum. The other thing is that when I look at the apartment pipeline, as of last year, there were 14,000 apartments in the pipeline that were approved but not constructed. When we add the park to it and some of the other ones that have been approved over the past year, number's close to 16,000. Now, I know that every staff recommendation and anything that you get on the council or the commission report says, recommendation is to approve. And they base that recommendation on traffic study, on water study, but what they're really not doing is they're not, they're not putting the impact of those 16,000 apartments into the equation. They are treating it like it's the only game in town. Now, 16,000 apartments equals about 25,000 cars, maybe 30,000 toilets, 30,000 showers. The traffic is going to be horrible when everything gets built. The water usage, what's the, what's the solution for that? I don't see any. And finally, when I look at this concept that frequently comes before you, that there is residential housing next to some commercial development, I mean, this to me, what is about 1950 units under single, single, single unit, you know, apartments? I mean, this is starting to look like a North Korean model. You know, where there's a little complex, people go to work, then they walk across to their little apartments. Are you kidding me? I mean, you think all these great people that work at Axon are going to live in this small little apartment? They've got bigger plans for their lives, they have their families, they have girlfriends, they have wives, husbands. This whole thing is absurd. And so what's next? Maybe they should give up their cars and just walk around? This is Korean-style stuff that doesn't belong in Scottsdale. Thank you. And that's North Korea, by the way.
Next, we have Mr. Adam, Alan Kotler, excuse me. Please state your name and address, you have three minutes.
Alan Kotler, 8108 East Michelle Drive. Everybody's pretty much said the same thing, density, density. And if you look, I don't know how much you can see on the map, but if you look, when you, if you try to head north on Hayden and to get onto the freeway, the 101 freeway, if you want to go west, right now at rush hour, you have to wait on the light for at least two, three, four times before you can get through. The traffic is 10, 20, 30 cars back already and Hayden's booked up. What's going to happen if you're going to put 4,000 residents there, right at the edge where they, where you get on the freeway? How's anybody going to get out of the, out of the, out of the lot? It's going to be impossible. So that's just to add to what they're doing and also 82nd Street, right now, it's an empty street, you know, just for us residents, it's peaceful. I can't imagine if they put traffic on that street, how many accidents there'll be, people, you know, getting in and out of the house, it's just, it's bad. It's really bad. I've been there 27 years and that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Looks like we also have Ms. Lisa Kotler. That's why I said Ms., I thought that was safe. Please state your name and address, you have three minutes.
My name is Lisa Kotler. I live at 8108 East Michelle Drive. We've been in Stone Brook again for 26, 27 years and the density is a big issue. We also were recently at the Airport Planning Commission and they voted unanimously against the rezoning. My biggest thing is against the rezoning because we don't need more apartments. There's plenty of apartments. San Artes has a lot of apartments for people to live in if they work at Axon or there's apartments further south of us. There's plenty of apartments and with Axon's, you know, as one person put it, greed, I don't know how many of their employees are going to be able to afford the rent anyway, but it shouldn't be zoned for residential. It should stay industrial like it is and protect our neighbors and our neighborhood. The traffic, I work full-time at Honor Health, I'm in healthcare and I need to get in and out of my neighborhood. And right, even right now, as my husband was saying on Hayden, it's always backed up and takes a lot of time to get onto the freeway. But also, there's Abbott that is off of Pace Center and their employees exit off along Mayo Boulevard onto Hayden. And when they leave at the rush hour time, not only is Mayo backed up trying to get onto Hayden, but Hayden is also backed up. So the traffic is a nightmare. The, the roundabout that they want to make on 82nd Street is totally absurd because I need to get in and out of my neighborhood. And we have enough problems getting in and out of our neighborhood for the one week of the Phoenix Open. And we've dealt with that and we've, we've handled that and we work well with the city and, and the police officers who helped regulate traffic. But to do this and again, have it on a daily basis, it's absurd and I'd probably go insane. And I'm a really calm, collected person and have a lot of patience, so I'm, I'm highly against the rezoning of this area. Oh, and one last thing is that originally, the fire station was supposed to be on the north end, right closer to the freeway rather than right next to our development. So I would hope that the fire station can be put back where it was originally put, hoping that this zoning does not go through. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kotler. Now we have Mr. David Silverman. Okay, thank you.
Good evening. My name is John Arnold and my home address is 8295 North 73rd Place, 85258. We sit in this beautiful city hall, in this beautiful city of Scottsdale. This building was built in the late 60s. This city did not look like it looked like today, 55 years ago. There was development, there was growth. And of all the residents in the community that is being affected here, I think Stone Brook, I have great empathy for all of those residents. This type of project, next to a home, I understand those concerns. I think there's roughly 500 residents in that community. The city of Scottsdale has 200 and roughly 240,000 citizens. And your job today, as I understand it, is to think and vote and make your recommendation to city council on behalf of all citizens of Scottsdale. Economic growth is a bedrock of this community. It always has been and is a very desirable place to live. I've studied economics for 25 years professionally. Having a company like Axon here in our community is something that draws new employees, keeps current employees here, increases property values for all of us. Again, I have great empathy for the people in the, in the, in the community there, but keeping a company like Axon, of which the employees that we have today, in addition to where it's going to grow, is going to continue to bring great economic impact that benefits all citizens of Scottsdale. And the threat of them potentially leaving to a state that would want to have this great company is real. And I can't imagine that we would want to have that as a council, city council, planning commission, have that, even be at risk to have a great company like Axon leave because of this situation. So I implore you to go ahead and approve the measures to make sure that Axon continues to stay here within the city of Scottsdale and helps this city flourish, not only in the short term, but also in the long term. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Arnold.
Good afternoon. My name's Aaron Howard. I own Howard Wealth Advisors off of Hayden and I've come over here to speak about my support for Axon. Quickly, I know that there's a lot of negatives that the public has brought out, mostly dealing with traffic, over-density and some economic issues. I'm on the board of the Young Professionals of the Scottsdale Chamber and I'm also on the Scottsdale Leadership and we talk about city planning and the issues that are going on. And there are some policy sunsets with funding that Scottsdale needs more funding. Scottsdale doesn't have too much infrastructure for tech companies and as, in Arizona, we are behind in tech companies. I lived in Miami for a little bit and we are significantly behind the ball. Axon coming into this community would bring significant impact on our economic welfare and I don't think Axon is going to be bringing in low-paying jobs. As you know, I am a wealth manager. I do know that your property values will now go down out here in Scottsdale. They will only, they will only go up. With the residential sites on Axon's site, plastic here on the screen, I think it's a benefit. I truly think that as a young person myself, you know, a young business owner, that there is not enough affordable housing, and I'm not talking about low-income housing, I just mean affordable housing that's nice, that is not like the Optima, that's $6,000, $7,000 a month. So I think Axon coming here is a, is a good thing and I just wanted to show my support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. Now we have Mr. Josh Eisner. You're giving your time? Oh, I, okay, I do, I see that, my apologies. Mr. Smith, or would you like to speak now? And you're still in the list? I'm sorry, I'm going in order of the stack, there's 22 people, I'm getting there.
All right, so my name is Rick Smith. I've had the wonderful fortune to start a company in a garage in Tucson and at three employees, we moved up to Scottsdale. I love Scottsdale, it's my favorite place on earth to live. And what we want to do here is to do something extraordinary in terms of building something wonderful that will help us attract the talent we need to grow. So from that garage, we've grown, we're now on the S and P 500, in fact, we're the fastest growing company on the S and P 500. And not only do we make tasers, but we are a huge developer of software. And for those of you, you know, who are looking at the labor market, software jobs are in the highest demand, they are the highest paid. The biggest challenge we have is getting people to want to come to Arizona. Arizona's not seen as a, as a tech center per se and we had an open office in Seattle, Washington. We now have development offices in London, Brussels, Seattle, we made an acquisition in Atlanta. What we need to be able to do to bring people in though, we're competing with Google and Microsoft and Facebook. All of those companies are investing in projects that put appropriate housing near their campuses. A few years ago, we recorded, we recruited more people out of Harvard University than every other company in Arizona combined. Now, to get those people to want to move here, young people in particular want to live in a community where they, there is a walking district. The environment is very important to them, they don't want to get in their cars and drive every morning to work. They want to have a walking district. From our building, we want to be able to walk nice places to have lunch. We want to create something that is wonderful, that helps us attract people and that, you know, I live in Scottsdale too. I would tell you, when this thing is done, when the Phoenix Open is happening, rather than this being a parking lot, this is going to be a big strolling area where we're doing this specifically to attract people who want to come and live here and not have to. I mean, imagine if we didn't have people that could walk to work, there'd have to be hundreds or thousands of cars driving and parking there every day, that's more traffic. And the key of our, of our campus is an event center. We host several large events every year with the nation's leading police leaders. We want to be able to host that in our building. In fact, that's the core rationale for doing this, which means we also need hotel space where people can walk. If you've ever been to a conference, they don't rent a hotel across town and then bus people around. So this has all been designed in an integrated way to help us bring the best, brightest, young talent, building really high-paying jobs. And look, if we, if we don't do it here, we're going to continue to grow, we'll just continue to grow in Seattle, Atlanta, and other jurisdictions because that's where people want to move. The suburban lifestyle, look, I live in Ankala, it's great for me, but this next generation, they're looking for things that are more environmentally focused and more community-focused and that's why this works as one integrated entity. And I'll tell you, as our neighbors, if we're allowed to build this, I look forward to inviting you all over, I think you'll be surprised, we're, we're not building anything for North Korea. We're building something to recruit people away so they don't feel like they've got to go to Google so that they can work somewhere, be able to walk to nice amenities and have a lifestyle that doesn't require driving everywhere, but that you can actually walk and enjoy, you know, a community built around where you live and work. So thank you all and appreciate the opportunity to speak on this and we're really excited to continue our growth here in Scottsdale.
Thank you. Okay, and just look at that, Ms. Sunny Curtley. Next on the, next in the list.
Apologies, Chairman Higgs. Normally, the owners and the team doesn't speak before the public finishes, that's why.
A C I is not an applicant, he was requesting to speak, that was the difference.
Gotcha, gotcha. I'll be brief because many points have been made. I think one, oh, Sunny Curtley, COGS Coalition of Greater Scottsdale. I think it's important to remember that rezoning is an ask. It's not a right, it's an ask. For a general plan amendment, for rezoning, it's an ask. So the decision is in your court. It's been mentioned several times, a property is purchased with already on the map that is prohibited for R5 zoning. It's already been noted that the Hayden, right here, Hayden Core Transition Zone, the buffer would be removed. And it's been mentioned that, and we hope that you will trust your airport commissioners. They unanimously voted to deny recommending to city council. And why? Pretty easy reason. The flight path, there's an intense flight path that goes over this area. And you know, and I know, that when neighborhoods start to complain about noise ordinances, 4,000 anticipated complaints were cited at the airport commission. If this airport pattern goes right over the top of the apartment building and the hotel, that's a concern. that's a concern. 1975 apartments, 425 keys, potential for noise. So what would that do to the airport? Santa Monica Airport was closed because of development in the area, and it was shut down because of complaints. So that's a real concern. We have a very successful airport, it needs to be protected. The commissioners all said they were worried about operations and sustainability. So, one of the key things, I hope you'll remember, that all boards, all commissions, all city councils ask the question on each potential project, what is the public benefit? It looks like a map for measles, but it's not. This map shows apartments, complexes that have available vacancies within five-mile radius. The apartments aren't needed, so what is the public benefit if this is approved? There isn't one. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Curtley. Next, we have Mr. Chad Aruda. Please state your name and address, you have three minutes.
My name is Chad Aruda. My business address is 8525 East Pinnacle Peak Road. For a long time, I've been very vested within the community as a community servant. I've served on the Board of Scottsdale Rising Young Professionals, Scottsdale Leadership, currently active member of the Scottsdale Charos, and I feel as though that I have a good understanding on what some of the best interests of the community are. Supporting the growth and continued success of Axon in Scottsdale is important to the economic future of the city. These jobs provide important base income for local surrounding businesses. Axon is not only expanding their campus, but their community efforts. They want to be, become a bigger part of the Scottsdale community. This new location will have enormous and far-reaching benefits to the city of Scottsdale and its residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Aruda. Next, we have, and we have, we have two left, Morningstar Bloom. Please state your name and address, you have three minutes. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Morningstar Bloom, and I'm with Worker Power Institute at 1021 South 7th Ave. We are a 501(c)(3) organization dedicated to increasing civic participation for working families and community input for development throughout Maricopa County. The Airport Aviation Advisory Board recently voted unanimously against this project. One advisory board commissioner raised concerns that an influx of new residents to the area could result in complaints about air traffic noise that threatens the long-term viability of Scottsdale Airport. Nearby residents spoke out about their concerns about the impact of increased traffic and building heights brought to the, by the hotel and residential units. In addition, a recent poll from the Arizona Progressing Gazette found that 67% of those who were surveyed would oppose the rezoning for this land. Only 26.4% of those surveyed initially support the rezoning of Axon. Others have raised concerns that Axon underpaid for the land, money that would have gone to our public education system if it had been valued appropriately. Given all this, we ask that you vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bloom. And our final speaker this evening is Rosaline Crupp.
I'm Rosaline Crupp. I live at 3300 North Scottsdale Road. I think I can offer a really interesting perspective as a young person who moved to Scottsdale for Axon. Before I came to Axon, Scottsdale was honestly not on my radar. I'm from the Midwest and went to school at Harvard, so I had never really even been west. One of my key initiatives, though, in each of the places I've lived, has been getting involved in the community. In Cincinnati, my hometown, where I lived until I was 18, I was really involved in civic responsibilities and in community organizing, so I had a very vested interest in doing good. At Harvard, I was actively involved in a lot of student groups, and I really felt like I was making a difference. The interesting thing about these two locations is that there was community. You know, Cincinnati's a pretty mid-sized city, it almost feels like everyone knows everyone else, and Harvard is a college campus where you can meet everyone, have meaningful conversations, and make really meaningful connections. The scariest thing about moving to a new place, Scottsdale for me, is not really knowing who you are or where you belong. Finding community was something that I was really, really passionate about and also kind of struggled with. I kind of realized that there were two hubs or two different parts of Scottsdale with Old Town, where I now lived and settled, and North Scottsdale. While you can find a very meaningful community in Old Town, and I definitely think it's a great place to live, I think building this headquarters in North Scottsdale would allow me to create the same kind of community. Axon is such a mission-driven company. We're going to obsolete the bullet. And the only way we can do that is by having these really complex conversations and talking to our peers. It's hard to talk to someone and have those daily chats by the water cooler or daily chats in the hallway about topics you're interested in when you're working remotely and only have 30-minute Zoom calls. So therefore, I really encourage you to approve this plan, and I look forward to hearing what the council says. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think we made it through all of the comment, request-to-speak cards, I should say, as well as the written comments. We've read them. Thank you for everyone that has taken the time to submit and speak as well. And now we will give the applicant an opportunity to respond.
Thank you. I appreciate it. You've heard from a lot of people, some of the points are the same, some of them are different. I'm going to try to hit the major issues, and then I assume you'll have questions for me as well. Should I do the rebuttal before the questions? Assume?
Yeah, why don't you go ahead and do that, because that may impact some of the questions, I should say.
Sure, I think that's fair. One of the things that was brought up is the, the situation with the state, and I, I don't agree with a number of things that people have said. I also think this is not the appropriate location for this, but we, we have been working with the state, and we have an agreement with the state to move the, to modify the crossroads agreement, so the state is going to be working with the city to modify that agreement, and, and they will allow residential in the area. This is not an issue for this body, but it's certainly worth noting that the state is in agreement with us in our application, asking for residential. I think they do that for a number of reasons. Somebody mentioned what, what this will look like in 50 years, Scottsdale. I, I don't know, I know I won't look great in, in 55 years, and somebody sort of mocked what our 100-year strategy is. But we, we bought this land on purpose so that we had room to grow and address our own issues. We didn't do it by accident, and we don't expect to be out of business anytime soon. One of the things that we think we do really well is innovate, and, and we're always working on the next solution. It's not easy. When we, when we first started with the body camera, nobody, nobody wanted it. Officers didn't want it, courtrooms didn't allow it, but we worked through those issues, and now it's hard to find an officer who will work without one. The taser likewise, it was hard to convince officers to carry those. Now, almost every officer has one or something similar to it. Those things didn't happen just by accident. It's great to hear Rick speak, and Rick is an amazing leader, but the reason you see so many people in this room is because we care about what we do next, and it takes a lot of people. Not everything we do works out. You, you see our successes, you don't see the things we work on that don't work out. You don't see the, the people that work behind, for example, when you see our, our Axon logo on TV, and we think you see mostly ours because our cameras are of a higher quality, they're durable. But, but that's because we put a lot of talent behind that. We, we hire a lot of people to figure these things out. It doesn't just happen. And as Rick mentioned, we have a very particular employment base. It's part of why the state wants us, it's part of why the city wants us. Somebody mentioned whether or not, you know, our employees could, could pay, could pay rent on an apartment. I think we're super proud of the compensation that we provide people. We have to do that because we have to attack, to attract the best talent, and so we're not worried about, about having places that people can afford. We're saying, look, there is a problem out there, and there are people who suggest that there's not a problem on, on housing. We believe that there is. It impacts our ability to grow. We believe that that project, problem is going to continue to grow. You in this body have discussed, or will discuss, a number of other projects, including probably two hospitals in the nearby area. Somebody, a number of people brought up how many apartments may or may not be built in this area in the next five years. I don't know. I can tell you this, the economy changes on a regular basis, and a lot of apartments get proposed over time, and a lot of them don't get built. We're not asking you as a city to solve our problem with housing. We're not, we're not willing to count on that, frankly. I don't mean that in a bad way, but just like we're not asking you to solve it, we're also not asking other developers to go out and solve it. Some of those apartments will be like Optima, and somebody pointed out, much more expensive. Some will, will not meet our more immediate needs. Some, some will not arrive in time, and some will be geared totally differently to what we're looking for. We know what our employees want, we know what we need to make this campus thrive, we're just asking you to let us do it. We're not asking you to solve it for us. And as it relates to, to why we care about the long-term future, we know we're going to continue to grow, but we can't do it here if we can't satisfy the demands of our employees, a big part of which is housing. Again, look at your app any day in the last month, and you're going to find stories about how hard it is to develop and how short we are on units, and how, well, lots of people say they want to solve the problem, they always want it to be solved somewhere else. We're just saying, let us solve it here. And it makes sense for a bunch of reasons. We're on a freeway, our headquarters is going to be right next door if you continue to bring jobs to Scottsdale, and for sure, you're doing that. The city is working diligently to, to continue to recruit employees here. One of your biggest goals is to bring new jobs, but they're going to live somewhere. If, if we build this headquarters, we are going to bring people. It is the reason we would build the headquarters. They have to live somewhere, and we're busting at the seams. Invite any one of you at any time to come out to the headquarters, and we'll walk you through. We're, our headquarters building, current headquarters building is full. The one across the street is. We have temporary space around town. It, it doesn't continue to work if we do this. We have to find a solution, and we're, we're coming here proposing the solution. One of the things that was mentioned was the airport commission, and, and the airport seemed to have, the commission had two big issues. One of them was whether or not these would be apartments or they would be condos. Apartments are different than condos, and the airport apparently was concerned that they couldn't dictate whether or not they would be apartments. And the second was sound. The sound quality issue is, I think, solved by your own building safety code, and we've spent some time with your staff talking through that, and we're certainly willing to agree to stipulation that requires us to build to a certain sound code, but you don't have to because it's already in your code. We don't have a choice. We, we have to make sure that the units we build are of sufficient sound quality abatement, and, and your code will require specifically a plan indicating what materials we use, how we use them. And the second piece is, we're happy to stipulate that these will remain apartments and that we won't be asking for a plat, and we're happy to ask, agree to a stipulation that if this land is ever further platted, that it has to go to the council, that it can't be done administratively. Some of the discussion about, about how much density this is, I think, is, is a little bit unfair to us. This is a 70-acre piece, and because we're necessarily going to build the headquarters for this to happen, you know that the remainder of those 70 acres are not going to be apartments. So we argue that since we own the land, and since we're going to build on the rest of the land first, you can assume that the rest of the land will not be apartments. It can't because we'll have been, we'll have already built the headquarters. There was some discussion about our hotel, I think Rick really covered this well. Number of people have focused on what we do. What we do is primarily focused on law enforcement. We do a lot of training for law enforcement. Law enforcement does other training that we work to facilitate as part of our conferences. And while you might be able to go into any hotel and get space, you might not be able to go into any hotel and get space that we think is built for us, that's private, that has the ability to go fire tasers and run around with cameras and do other things. The hotel will feed the conference facility, and the conference facility, will I guarantee you, be unlike any other you have ever seen. It will be an incredibly active center. It's not like going to the Hilton or the Hyatt and renting a ballroom. I'm happy to go over pictures again and show you, but I think you already get that point. One of the other comments that was made repeatedly is that the townhomes, the map that you're looking at is the city's map, and, and they are townhomes to the city because they're in multifamily zoning. They may act as single-family homes, but they were zoned multifamily. I'm happy to answer questions. I, I really want you to understand how important this entire campus is to us. As Rick said, we've really designed this to be a, a thing that functions in, in multiple ways. The headquarters is great for research and design and coding and doing all kinds of other high-tech jobs, as well as manufacturing, as well as conferences and other, other uses. And we really see value in bringing those conferences in, bringing chiefs from around the, the world to, to see what our products are, but also, in the middle of those conferences, to be able to say, Bob from Nebraska has a really good idea, let's bring him over to engineering and see if we can figure this out now. This is very unusual. We're a very unusual company, and we're designing something that works for us. It's, it's why we also want, the COVID situation has been really challenging for us, it's changed the way people work, and, and it's changed the way people live. We can't recruit in the same way without having the housing. I know you probably have questions, so I think maybe I'll answer questions and include some of my other comments in those answers.
Thank you, Mr. Holmantel. I, I know we, we have some questions here. I'll kick it off. One thing I noticed in your presentation today, the phasing. I think that's different from what we had originally seen in terms of the phasing of the housing. Curious as to what the reasoning was behind that, first of all, and then, second, what if it's determined that, you know, that first phase was, was ample enough? We might not need a second phase, would you just do away with that, or what are your thoughts?
So where, where did it come from? I suppose the time-honored tradition of, of conversations, which I think is where most great ideas sort of evolved from. We've had conversations with a, a lot of folks at the city, in the city, around the city, and we realize that, that 19, 1,975 units at the same time is a lot. And so, if I've got a stipulation, I'm willing to propose as well, but our thought is, we're, we're not planning to build them all at once, and people are concerned about that, so if we're willing to, to say that, we should be willing to stand behind it. And so, when, when the time is right, I'm happy to read a draft stipulation, but the idea is, people are concerned about it happening all at once, and we don't want to build it all at once, and the, the thing that you mentioned is really true. We want the right to do this now because we have to know what our rights are as we move forward. We think this will be what's right for us, but as we move through the phases, we may find that what we've proposed, what we build in phase one, might not be the same as phase two, just like the first taser is very different than the 10 that we have out now. One of the things I think we're most proud of is our ability to be right instead of consistent. And so, as, as we see things evolve, we're going to build a phase, and then we're going to take some time, and then we're going to build a phase, and we're going to take some time. And as the headquarters opens, I think we'll learn even more what people want. And we're proposing some of these units to be five years out. I, I suspect if we, if we asked each of us to be candid about where the world was five years ago and where it would be today, we'd all be a little bit wrong. I, I certainly would have been. I wouldn't have picked the last five years, and so it seemed right for us to meet at a common ground of, of a phased approach. Is it worth proposing a stipulation, or is that better for later on?
I guess I'll look to staff for that.
Chair, Chair Higgs, I think that's something we would probably address, is, and there's a development agreement associated with this case that would be worked on by staff and presented to city council. These are the things we typically develop, address in a development agreement, so I think it's helpful to understand the commission, but probably wouldn't be included as a zoning stip.
Okay. Thank you. Great, thank you. I'll move on to questions from other commissioners. Yes, Commissioner Serena.
Yeah, I think, thank you. I have a couple of questions that I'd like to clear up. First, first, I think I'll echo even what some of your major opposition says, and that is, right, Scottsdale's better off having Axon here, and the innovation that's done, the quality of jobs that Axon and the leadership does bring is, is fantastic for the city, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
I think it, it is great. I think a- I think a couple of things. One is I, I want to make sure we're separating the two though, is that there's been a lot of overlap in conversation between the application tonight, which is 1,900 and some units in a hotel, and an application that you had previously, which was actually your headquarters, correct? And, and that headquarters from, by my understanding, that, that's been approved and that's the one that you've shown on the screen, correct?
The headquarters that we've shown you on the screen is what's been approved, yes.
So at the time, did you own all 70-ish acres when that happened?
We did. At that time, we owned all 70 acres. We've since dedicated some to the city of Scottsdale for a roadway, some for a fire station and some for a water treatment facility.
And that, was that since or was that part of the original application?
We've dedicated it since. It was not, I don't know if it was part of the original application or not, but I, I think it's fair to say.
It was contingent.
We always discussed dedicating those streets before we got to you, to the city of Scottsdale, the fire station and, and the water treatment facility.
Right.
At the same point in time, we've also discussed with the city, as we prepared this application, that we would not expect to be able to build any of what we're posing now unless we break ground on, on the headquarters. And so in that way, our discussions with the city have tied the two together.
So why is this, if it's a master planned, you know, situation, why did this come separately? Why didn't you wrap these up as one when you came for the original application?
Because the world was different then. We, we've learned a lot over time as to what we would do with the land. When we originally came forward, it was to figure out what to do as a headquarters. As time has moved on, the world has been much different than we expected it to be. For example, work from home is different for everybody. It's, it's certainly different for us in research and design. It's different for us as we deal with law enforcement technology and information on a regular basis. And as we've moved forward over the last several years, the housing crisis that, that clearly exists in the valley has gotten significantly worse. Since that time, we've also learned that, that owners of property nearby are likely to build two significant medical facilities. All of those things eat at our ability to do what we need to do most. The most valuable thing we have is great people and we need to be able to bring them here and that has become significantly more challenging as time has gone by.
Yeah. So one thing you, you, thank you. One thing you had mentioned as your rebuttal, as you put it, is the issue with the state land and kind of deferring to it not being a, something that's for this body. I would kind of argue that actually it is. The state land, prior to your acquisition of this property, came to this body and then the city council and asked for approval of 1,000 acres approximately. That was significant to this. So it's certainly connected and I think the, the association by some of the neighbors and, and people that spoke tonight is certainly valid. A, a little, you know, I don't know how long you've been on the case, but a little, you know, background, I remember when this first came and it's really important for me as I thought through the case, because I came to it and I think when you have this many people in a room, I was talking to Tim Curtis on staff, the last time I remember this many people at a planning commission meeting was a while ago. And when this happens, I think there's going to be people that are very committed and, and convicted on both sides.
Sure.
And so I want to make sure we kind of understand how, how we got here in the history and not going back to even 2000. So in 2018, the, the state land department redeveloped this as Crossroads East and that's the development agreement that you bought the land under that assumption that it was Crossroads East from the 2018. Is that correct?
We did. That's correct.
Okay. And in that, inside of your packet, do we have the ability to pull the, the packet up? I have the pages on here? If not, I have the physical copies. We can put them up there.
Yeah, we don't have that booted up.
Okay. So inside of your own packet, and I think this is important for reference. I know someone from staff wants to grab this. That one right there? That map there? I'm going to have a couple more, so I, I'll get them to you in a second. Can zoom in on the bottom one, the one with the Roman numerals there? Can you move it out of the light? We can see it? I can't. There, yeah. So basically we're talking about, right, X, which is with 41 acres, correct? And then the X, is it, right, Roman numeral X? And then right beneath that, that's what we're talking about. So if you want to put your pencil on there to show the one we're talking about, correct?
This is what you're referring to, I see.
Yeah, correct. That, that's your, that's your parcel of land?
That's correct.
Okay.
Uh, yes, it is.
That's your parcel, okay. So when this first came from Crossroads, to give you again, that context, the entire parcel at that time, before the 2018 Crossroads, there was 4,500 dwelling units for all 1,000 acres on the book. So some of the people that are referring to property they bought 20 years ago were under the assumption that there'd be 4,500 units in that 1,000 acres in totality. Then when Crossroads came in 2018, that number increased by 50% to 6,900, 6,969, 6,969 units. I know you've done some work with the neighbors, but in 2018, the gentleman who brought this case forward from the state land department, Mark Edelman, had actually said that he worked with the neighbors, but never reduced one unit based on neighborhood impact of opposition. So at that time, when that entire unit was put together, it went up 50% in the number of dwelling units. And now since then, we're bringing that from 6,900 and change to now 8,900 and change because of this one piece, which is your small right quadrant, correct?
I, I can't agree to all of those numbers. It doesn't mean they're, they're right or not. I know that over time, the state has made other adjustments as well and at various times, this piece has been residential and not.
Okay. So I don't know if staff wants to look that up, but that's at least from the 2018 Crossroads. I could read it if you'd like, but it says right here on the June 12th, 2018 city council report, "The request would increase the Crossroads property number of potential residential units in the Crossroads East master plan by 51%, 4,596 to 6,969." So as long as staff still stands by those comments in the 2018 report, that math would check. And then in your today are going from to 8,944. Now mind you, in that piece, if I'm understanding it right, we've agreed to section, was it 136 acres in the middle, right, Roman numeral V? Your section has now increased that. That's the nationwide site, the large one there, kind of dead center that was wrapped up in there. So right there, we're now talking about, and they, they were approved for approximately 1,500. So we're at 4,000 units in approximately 20% of a 1,000 acre parcel. And we've yet to see 109 acres to the north of you, 71, I mean, I'm just kind of going around, right? And to assume that since a lot of these are going to be approved under the PCP, I'm just kind of running the math out, projections and as a major SMP company, right, and you guys would think about these in those projective terms, right, from PE ratios, et cetera. So, so that just brings the number of units. If I, if I continue to play this out, this was talked about in 2018, that this could happen with rezoning 1,000 acres of land with really no blueprint in place. At that time, the airport commission was concerned about approximately 1,500 residential units on the Roman numeral V site. They voted down that proposal six to one. The airport commission today on 1,900 units additional is recommending denial of seven Another speaker brought up the comment about the R5. I didn't think I saw it in your packet, but in addition to the R5, this is from, which again, I would assume that your team looked at what had been approved when you purchased the land. This, Mr. Curtis, I have something else from the Crossroads. This one right there? And that one and then that one first and then, sorry, and this one after that. Yeah, so that, that one first. So I know one speaker brought up the R5. This is correct from your packet, proposed PCP as well as R5. I mean, that's not R5, it's PCP, correct?
I'm sorry, he was walking by me, I missed.
Yeah, your, your proposal was a PCP, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so even if you remove the R5, which I would understand from residential, this land had already been cited in 2018, which this would have been in place when you bought the property. And again, I think it's kind of blurry there, but my understanding, and maybe staff can correct me, but it says PCP restricted on that piece. Does it, does it not?
Chair Higgs, Commissioner Serena, that's correct.
Okay. And so Mr. Curtis, could you show the other one that I had up there as well? This is actually one that you had inside of your, your current packet, but this is from 2018. So you'd have known this when you bought it. It looks like mixed-use PCP sections right there to the right. Those are the two sections that we're talking about today. I mean, there's six out of what, 11 parcels that are available to have PCP designation and even more for R5. And two of the ones, the two that you purchased were stated as, as not having that per the city. So, and you could actually see the, the number up there at the, the top, that's that math by 51% from 4,500 to 6,900 in units additional from 2018. So what I'm just trying to understand, when I hear the neighbors say, "We bought this understanding something 20 years ago," it was increased by 50% in 2018. We're now not just looking about your 70 acres. That's the conversation that brought this forward. But as planners, and you asked us to think about the broader city, I, I do think about this in totality of the 1,000 acres that was rezoned by the state in 2018, rezoned, trying to get rezoned now. And I'm trying to understand like where this fits. If we give this kind of exception today, then everybody else that comes forward is going to say, "Well, this PCP was totally restricted on these two parcels and you're, and you're going to deny me what I want on my parcel."
So I'm not sure what the question is exactly, but you've asked me a number of assumptions. I'm going to go back to my earlier comment.
Okay.
Talk about the wisdom of hiring the best people.
Hold on, we're, we're getting, we're getting in the abstract again.
No, no, no.
You, you, you bought, I think the case made for Harvard graduates and high-quality people is fantastic and I think some, you have some bright people here. I am not arguing of the intelligence or the valid point that Axon needs to hire extremely bright people to do the great work they do. I'm, that is, that's just shelf that war on the same page.
What I'm doing here is different than you think.
Okay.
I'm, I'm actually turning, I brought an expert myself.
Okay.
Lauren.
Sure.
Who knows the, the plan, the Crossroads East plan way better than I do.
Okay.
So you're asking assumptions, we have the file and I'm going to turn it over her.
Okay.
To address your specific assumptions. Having said that, I will say that one of the challenges for us is that other people may or may not develop the things they're allowed to.
Mm-hmm.
And it doesn't help us if they don't. Doesn't help us get where we need to be.
But as it sits right now, you're developing something that you, as it states today, is why you're here in front of this body, can't. And you could have under a number of other designations. Now, I'm not saying it's not a valid.
You're right.
It's your right to do this. I'm not saying it's not your right.
No question, we need your permission.
Okay.
Absolutely not.
Okay.
All right. Well, thanks for the great intro, Charles. Lauren Prover-Potter for the record. So I think the important thing to consider when talking about Crossroads East is that it's not the 2018 amendment to really take into consideration, it's the history of what happened when it was core north and core south and that goes back to the 1980s and 1990s here. So when Crossroads East was originally kind of reconfigured from the core north projects, if you want to put that on overhead, you can. It had only four planning units. So the 2018 amendment, I know, it seems like you know it really well, so I won't get into all the nitty-gritty on that, but it did have four planning units. We were in planning unit three. Planning unit three allowed all of those uses, which would have included residential. So there was no restriction against residential on this property at that time. That changed with the 2018 amendment where really the change was the permitted zoning districts. It doesn't have an outright prohibition against residential, but that amendment specifically addressed the planning unit zoning allowances and it created a bunch of different planning units. So that was the exhibit that you had, that I think there was 11 at that time. So when the zoning categories were different at that time, there have been a lot of changes that have occurred. The land use budget isn't necessarily the state land department spec zoning these 1,000 acres. They wanted the flexibility to rezone from these different budgets. And so that's where the numbers come from, the densities, the breakdowns, et cetera. It's been amended many times over the years, some significantly. 2018, I think, was the last pretty significant amendment to Crossroads East, but that was the first time that this specific parcel was put into a planning unit that had a residential district that was not allowed.
So, so understood, that's, that's a, a previous planning unit piece, right? This is from what year?
Correct. This is from 2002 and it was first passed as Crossroads East.
Okay. So agree, and I think the whole point of here is the evolution and the ability to adapt. And, you know, the most recent one that we're sitting on and the assumption that I think it was purchased under, not assumption, and there's no, and you've mentioned that, like under my, I think presumptions, what you mentioned, you purchased it under the fact that it wasn't the 2002 though. So, I mean, this up here is great for historical context, but it had been approved under the current one, which as it stands today, and nothing changed, PCP is prohibited. We're increasing residential, the entirety of this 1,000 acres significantly on a relative 40 acre parcel. And that was the, that was the purchase. When you purchased that, you knew that, right? And so.
I, I.
I mean, you didn't, you didn't purchase it thinking it was going to revert back to 2002, I guess is my question.
Commissioner Serena, certainly not. And to be fair, in 2002, there was no zoning or restrictions.
Sure.
And none of it has zoning. It all has to be zoned when it comes in.
Right.
So everything just has PC zoning in Crossroads East unless it's been rezoned as approved. And so that's correct that we came in when the land was purchased by Axon. It was rezoned to I-1, but we are asking like several others have recently, in fact, in the Crossroads East area, to basically move numbers around in the Crossroads East land budget. It's, it has been done after purchases. It's, it's, we're not reinventing the wheel here. This is not unheard of. This has happened before. It's happened many times and it was always intended to be a flexible master plan.
Can you show me one development that's been restricted PCP that's in the specifically restricted PCP budget or map? Because that's, I mean, that, and again, I'm not going to get, this is, I'm going to stop because I think what the point's made. That's pretty specific. We're not moving how, first of all, we're not moving housing units, we're adding thousands, 2,000 housing units. I, I would suspect if there was just a hotel next to Axon, I would be a little surprised if the neighbors were, were that frustrated. I mean, you can try that and see. I would, I would be doing this a little while now. I think I'd be surprised. But we're not moving numbers around, we're adding. And you're specifically changing a, a, this isn't my remembrance of what happened or the conversation that was had at the meeting in minutes. I'm saying there's a PCP restriction. Has something, has something been approved that was in a PCP restriction in Crossroads, to your knowledge or staff's knowledge?
The PCP category is a newer addition, so I'm not aware of that, but it was originally not one of the categories that was contemplated for. But again, there is not a restriction against PCP zoning. The exhibits demonstrate the allowed land use types from the 2018 amendment. It did not include prohibitions on certain parcels. It, it is a demonstration of zoning allowances.
I'm not, I, I don't have, I have a degree in finance, not law, but can staff just one more time and then I'll stop because I think it's made. Can people put that other map up please with the, this becomes like talking in circles. My understanding, restriction, prohibition, unless I just can't see, can someone please read what is next to the red box on that screen from the 2018, which was the standing zoning in place in 2018 when the property was acquired? If I, let's not, I'll, I'll try it. PRC and PCP prohibited. Is that correct or is I, am I wrong?
Correct.
Okay. I'm going to ask our city attorney because we have to lean into him. Would prohibited and prohibition have a similar, would it be, would be reasonable to think those are similar meanings or are those just totally, you know, go back to your law class, like this is so different?
Commissioner, they didn't teach us this in law school, so.
Okay.
Chair Higgs, Commissioner Serena, I think we, you have to look at the context of the agreement. We haven't issued any legal advice on that as well.
Okay.
Regardless, the way this has set up, as I think has been alluded to, is the, the state land department had the Crossroads East zoning, so they were able to designate parcels and the zoning that would be on them as part of their sale process. So Axon didn't do a rezoning. So Axon didn't do a rezoning. They basically purchased it.
They purchased it.
That was designated by the state.
Just like the neighbors purchased it with 4,000 20 years ago.
So what, in that process, the staff works closely with state land. They kind of, and they look at the land use budget and stuff like that. So whether or not it was prohibited, I'm not prepared to answer that question.
Okay. Well, let's not tie the legal connection. It says prohibited in PCP. Is that correct?
Prohibited is a common term. We can look that up in the dictionary. You don't need a law degree for that.
Like what the definition of the word is, is?
Whether the context, whether the context of that agreement, we'd have to look at that carefully. It really isn't because this is a rezoning application, and the state land would approve, has approved or authorized the zoning to go forward. The application, so that would be changed as a result. Zoning can always be changed. That's a legislative...
Mr. Anderson, I think you made my point. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Thank you very much. I was going to ask Mr. Curtis a question. Mr. Curtis, the, when the SWAN was purchased from the state land department, you know, everybody's brought up the point that, well, Axon is making money or making so much money because they bought an industrial piece. Now they're going to turn it into a residential piece and make all this money. In reality, doesn't the state land department also have to weigh in on some of this zoning? And if so, is there some retroactive payments that might have to be made to the state land?
Chair Higgs, Commissioner Gonzalez, Mr. Curtis has asked me to respond to that.
Sure.
I think I just alluded to that, yes, there's two aspects. There's the Crossroads East zoning case as well as a development agreement. I think we are now on the third amended and restated development agreement to the previous points of the changing history of that. Both the agreement, the agreement requires that state land authorizes a change that this would affect, because this is part and intended to remain part of the Crossroads East. State land, we have been working with the state land department. They, as I mentioned, they have provided an authorization letter authorizing the zoning case to go forward. And then there would be a legal requirement that they also authorize a development agreement, that change that would be necessary in accompanying with this, that would, and staff is aware of that and working on that, so...
And in fact, we have agreed with the state land department that if this is approved, we would provide an additional payment.
Okay. So one more time, would you say exactly what you just mentioned before? So I can hear that again, please?
Sure, absolutely. In addition to what your attorney has said, we have been working with the state land department, and we have agreed that we would pay an additional sum if this is approved. And we're working on documenting that.
So basically, what you're saying, or I'm trying to rationalize one way or another, that if there's a shortfall to the state, that you will work out some sort of compensation with the state?
That's correct. Absolutely. That's correct.
Okay. That's an appropriate answer to me. Thank you.
Commissioner, tell.
Just to clarify on the meaning of prohibited. I think we would agree, well, I don't know. I shouldn't do, I, let me just ask. Is the applicant asking for something that they shouldn't ask for? That they're prohibited by law from asking for? Is this something that the, that, you know, Chris Mays could come after the city and the applicant for doing something that was illegal?
Commissioner, tell, Chair Higgs, the answer to that question is not that we're aware of. That is part of, I think, the zone, if I understand correctly, that was part of the overall zoning that was done previously. The zoning change, which is being requested here, is within the purview of the legislative powers of the city council. State has authorized the city council the power to rezone. So even if there was a zoning stipulation at the time, that's the purpose of the rezoning process, because the zoning can always be changed at the whim of the, I want to say whim, but is appropriate zoning change. The council has the legislative discretion to make that change. There isn't a legal prohibition outside of that that says you can't have this particular zoning in this particular area. That's purely a creature, if it is that, in fact, the case, purely a creature of that zoning case, and that's why we would be amending the zoning case.
But as the applicant said, this is an ask. You know, it's not, he doesn't have an absolute right for us to agree to that. It comes down, even though it was prohibited, the prohibition can be removed. But not automatically. There's nothing he can do to force that to happen. That's...
We've never challenged your discretion.
Right. This, as we used to say in the world of finance, this deal has a lot of hair on it, as far as I'm concerned. This issue with the state, you know, that came up. You know, the density is an issue. My biggest issue all along has been traffic. And I appreciate what Greg did in the write-up, that he explored that, you know, provided the traffic analysis. There was no comment on that tonight, though, by, you know, we alluded to traffic. A lot of the people speaking here, you know, were concerned about traffic. You know, I look at what the traffic engineers came, engineer came up with. And I shouldn't say came up with, because he uses engineering standards. They don't always make sense to me, but he's the pro, I'm not. Even if they don't make sense to him, he still has to use them, because that's what the profession says you have to do. I'm not convinced that the traffic will be as intense as it's laid out, but that's just my opinion. We got to go with what it shows. And what the data show is that some intersections have been, would be degraded. D, I used to convince my parents, was a good grade in engineering, traffic engineering. It is a good grade. It's, you know, passing. E's and F's, not so much. You know, E's, not good. F's, terrible. And there's nothing after F, so F covers a lot of degradation. I thought that we were going to have people from the Transportation Department here tonight. Are they here?
Chair Higgs, Commissioner, yes, we do have representatives from Transportation.
Can we have some conversation on the proposals that the applicant's traffic engineer has made? And, you know, what the city, if the city feels that this will get the E's and F's up to D?
Good evening. Phil Kircher with Transportation Department. You want just general comments?
Well, are, you know, can we collectively, the applicant, the city, get the intersections that show as E's and F's up to at least D? With the proposals that have been made?
Commissioner, tell, members of the commission. That's a tough question to answer. As, if you read the traffic impact study or summary, I mean, it's a fairly complicated study. It includes three interchanges and three roundabouts and a couple of signalized intersections. Essentially, our take on this proposal is that the original zoning case had estimated 8,000 trips per day being generated by the entire site, which was office and warehousing. We built, we helped design a street system to accommodate that traffic. And if you read the staff report, we worked with the applicant to, you know, they were proposing a headquarters, so we worked with them to try to push the street, which was originally Mayo and now is called Axon Way, to push that from bisecting the site and interrupting their campus. That's why we have the configuration that turns south and the three roundabouts, because we pushed the road out of the way. That road system could handle that 8,000 trips. What this proposal does essentially is double that 8,000. So, yes, there are capacity issues, as you've identified. We didn't have a lot of time to review the study and work with the applicant and their consultant to work through the assumptions and the recommendations. Some of them, well, the three main intersections that we have concerns about, the Hayden and Loop 101 interchange. It's adding a lot, most of the traffic coming outside is heading towards that interchange. So they're recommending some changes to the interchange, which brings ADOT into the conversation. That includes some lane configuration, reconfiguration, some additional, like an additional northbound left turn. Those are very difficult. I don't know if we can accommodate that. We'd have to work with ADOT. It's their decision. The Hayden, Mayo, Axon Way intersection is handling pretty much the majority of the site traffic. And so what's the resulting impact is that there's a lot of southbound left-turning traffic trying to get into the site, and a lot of westbound right-turning traffic trying to get out. Those are creating some pretty excessive queues. Those are creating some changes to the assumptions that we had made about the intersection, the signalized intersection, and how those lanes would be configured. And then the first roundabout to the east, which is referred to as Axon Way, Axon Way, we're concerned that the traffic from Hayden will queue into that roundabout and essentially lock it up. So, yeah, we do have a lot of concerns. We'd like to potentially continue working with the consultant. What we'd like to see is a simulation to make sure that this can work. But yes, as you pointed out, the study is showing that there are a lot of concerns. There are a lot of intersections that are overcapacity. Some of them overcapacity existing, that they're adding traffic to, so...
Okay. Well, and you mentioned roundabouts, and I'm glad you did, because I probably would have forgot. I may be unusual. I am unusual. But I'm unusual in Scottsdale because I'm not opposed to roundabouts. I did object to two that was down by Ancala some years ago. Those didn't go in. I was happy about that. But by and large, roundabouts work. But they do slow things down. And as you point out, Phil, this roundabout, you know, may get clogged down. So maybe we, you, want to rethink roundabouts. I mean, again, oftentimes they're a good idea. But maybe for the issue that you raise, it's an issue. However, that's your problem, that you're equipped to solve, not me. I would ask you, say, "It's going to take some time. You got to work with ADOT." I understand that. In your professional opinion, if you're driving this, I don't know that that's the way it works, but what the hey. If you're driving this, if you can push this engineer and get him to respond to your timetable, how long would it take to get this issue worked out? These issues, the traffic issue, the intersection degradation issue?
Commissioner, tell, members of the commission, I'm not sure I have a good answer to that, but it basically would take at least a couple of weeks.
Okay, okay. Well, and I appreciate that.
And part of that is the ADOT factor. I don't know how, you know, we don't control their timing.
Sure. You can push him, but you can't push the state. I understand that.
Correct, correct.
Not that you would push anybody. I understand. Okay, so a couple of weeks. So we're not talking about six months?
You're correct.
Okay, okay. What else on this? I believe that the water department was going, they didn't say specifically that there's enough water to support this project as proposed, but here he is. They're just hiding in the back so that I act like they're not here, and they pop up automatically.
Thank you, Commissioner. Brian Beastmeister, Scottsdale Water. Yeah, there's a lot of crowd here. I don't want to get in the way of citizens here. As to water, the applicant has not done their water appendix. What, so I have incomplete data. And, but the data I do have says we plan for 60,000 gallons per day for light and industrial for that area. And they're likely to use a factor of 10 more than that. So it's a substantial amount of water. But we don't have all the facts. They haven't provided the water appendix. They haven't provided some additional data that I don't have to make a judgment call on that.
So I will ask the applicant, when could Brian get that data so that he can get to work on it? And then Brian can, if you would tell us, pardon me for using your first name, but I can never pronounce your last name, so it's just me. How long would it take you, once you got the data, to make your assessment?
It's an iterative process. I feel like Phil said, it's, there's some things we don't control. But it's pretty simple. And it's a commitment by Axon to some other, some other things and other issues with our, with the development to help offset the water consumption.
Okay. But Phil says I can, you know, if people cooperate with me, I can do it. I can do my part in about two weeks. So how long, if people cooperate?
For the water resource component, not necessarily some of the infrastructure, we can certainly come around in a couple of weeks.
Okay.
So the answer to that is, we thought we'd provided it. Obviously, we didn't, but we could provide it as early as tonight or tomorrow morning. In fact, we have information available tonight.
Let's see. I believe that is all that I have. Thank you.
Commissioner Scarborough.
Thank you, Chair Higgs. Really enjoy following you. I get the check off of things or my questions. You hit on traffic and water. What I would like to ask the applicant is, could you enumerate the benefits to the public? And expound on it, please? I'd like to really hear in detail what benefits are being received by the public.
Sure. Is there where I can pull my presentation back up? I don't know who I'm speaking to in terms of...
If we could get the applicant's presentation back up. Thank you.
Give me a second to find the appropriate place. So there are a number of things that we've done over time that we think are helpful to the community. We recognize that not everyone's going to agree with that. And we also recognize that what we're doing is different than an industrial project that could go here that we think could be much less desirable. One of the things we've done is put in a mile-and-a-half exercise path. And I know some neighbors have said it's not appealing to them. Others have suggested at the neighborhood meeting that this is the kind of thing we do. Also a dog park. Again, while not everybody likes it, that was one of the requests we got at a neighborhood meeting. We also have provided significantly enhanced buffers, moving from what would be required in industrial up to 440 feet. We've dedicated significant lands to the city of Scottsdale, both their streets and a fire department and water facility, treatment facility. We've also added in additional shade elements that are significant. We're putting in substantial, we've agreed to put in substantial water infrastructure and sewer infrastructure. It helps us, but in the future. It will also help others. It'll help serve regional issues and provide more capacity, significantly more capacity for both water and sewer. It's certainly worth noting that some of that benefits us, as was the case with almost everything here, but it also benefits others. We're solving some of the traffic issues by putting in traffic infrastructure, including a traffic signal and a portion of a hawk. We're putting in significant landscape sections throughout along Axon Way, which would not have otherwise existed. In fact, it would just be the existing Mayo alignment, which doesn't have these expansive landscape solutions. I think those are the things that we believe, in addition to the obvious, which is providing world-class headquarters, great jobs.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Heemantel.
And tourism.
After hearing from Mr. Beastmeister, I'm curious, could you add more detail in terms of the water harvesting you've mentioned as an amendment to your...
Sure. I'm glad you asked that question. Brian and I had a discussion about this yesterday. We'd previously proposed doing water harvesting. I understand the issue is challenging because the sewer currently doesn't have capacity to put water in it to later harvest. And so I think that we would, it seems likely that we're going to have more time. And if we do, continue to work through that. But ultimately, if we work with the city on the sizing of the sewer capacity, if there's additional sewer capacity, then we can provide water harvesting, which ultimately the city gets water credit for.
Okay. Perfect. Right now, I'm really struggling with where I sit on this right now. I think not having a definitive understanding in terms of the water department or the traffic department really weigh heavy on me today. And so as I sit here today, I think I would like to see this project a little bit more developed and come back to us. So for-
I can see that coming. Time is relevant for us for lots of reasons. Your next meeting is on the 14th, I believe. We would like to come back sooner, but if not, at least come back on the 14th.
Understood. I'm not going to make a motion at this moment. I want to hear what all of my colleagues have to say here, but right now I'm really struggling with-
Even if you decide to continue, I think it's helpful for us to hear what the other commissioners say so that we're even more prepared next time.
Thank you. Chair Higgs, yours.
And with that, thank you. We'll move on to Commissioner Kaminski.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I wanted to try to break these into groups. The first one had to do with the schedule. You've mentioned that it was a 100-year plan. I hope it's really not going to take that long to build out.
No, that's just how long we want to continue to have it as our campus. Yes.
Right. You mentioned that the first phase, which would be the office building, the apartments, 525 units plus the 425 hotel, would be, permits would be pulled at the time that you're pulling permits for the office building. Is that right?
What I, similar, what I said is that we would not be able to pull permits for anything, essentially, until we first pulled permits for the office.
And do you-
Which we expect to do if we're approved. If this case is approved, we expect to do probably in the first half of this year.
But you have had the approval for the office building since '21? Is that right?
I couldn't tell you the exact date, but we've certainly had it for a while.
And was there, I read something about, and please let me know if I'm wrong, that there was a requirement for building permits to be pulled within five years of the purchase of the property? Is that?
I don't remember that as a condition, but it certainly might have been or in the agreement.
Okay, so I'm trying to do the math. If you were entitled in '21 and we're now in '24, do you have CDs completed?
We do.
And so what would you anticipate, regardless of tonight's meeting, what would you anticipate? Because you could start construction on the office building now.
We won't, we won't start until we have a sense of how we solve some of our issues. If those issues get solved, then we would expect to start in the first half of this year.
Okay, so by June?
We would expect by June. That's not a hard date, but that's a fair date for the assumption.
Okay. And then the council date you were anticipating for the Phase Two, which is what we're talking about tonight?
I think we already know that's not happening. So we were expecting February 6th.
So it's March, April-ish?
Anytime I speak for a city, I get myself in trouble, so I'm not going to answer that.
Okay. I guess I'm concerned about the number of units of multifamily that have already been built, about 4,800 within five miles, and another 1,900 are under construction, and another about 10,000 that are already entitled, and the time that it's taken to get the office building going. I was interested in the slide that showed the original density for this entire 1,000 acres was roughly four dwelling units per acre. And obviously, that's changed over time. It would be helpful to have a chart that showed us all 11 parcels with what's been built and what the density was that was entitled and what's left of the number of units since we've doubled the number since the initial 2002 plan, or it sounds like more like quadrupled if it started at three, 3,000 units, three something. 34, 43 total units on 1,000 acres, and we're going up from there, just to get an idea of how this plays out long-term in a 100-year scan of-
Are you asking staff for this information, I suppose, not me?
Okay, yes. I think that would be helpful. So that was kind of my questions on scheduling. I appreciate you filling in on some of the blanks there. I was concerned when I saw something about having to pull permits within five years of purchase because that would be coming up very quickly.
There's no question it's coming up quickly. We have decisions to make. No question about that.
Okay. With the housing, who's the developer of the housing?
We don't have a developer for the housing. The-
Okay. What percent of the employees currently live outside of Scottsdale?
I don't know the answer to that, but certainly we have a percentage that lives outside, and we're trying to bring people closer.
Okay.
That certainly has been a challenge.
And what percent of employees would be able to afford these units if their market rate? And my question is leading to, are these going to be incentivized for employees as a part of a company housing plan? Or, you talked about work from home, so is this offsetting office space that would normally be built?
Well, we, work from home doesn't, doesn't work in the same way for us as it does for everyone for many of our jobs. But our goal is to make these available first for employees and to incentivize them, frankly, to do that. We want them living here.
So a prioritization-
And I think most or all of our employees would be in the range. One of the reasons the state and the city, I think, are so eager to have us is that our compensation packages are incredibly competitive. That's how we get the best people.
So it would be a prioritization, or would it be an incentivization where part of their pay package is tied to the housing?
I'm not sure how to answer that today.
Okay.
We don't know enough about exactly how that will look.
Okay. One thing we haven't really talked much about is the fact that this does require a general plan amendment as well. So outside of the fact that the property was purchased with an understanding of what the zoning was at the time of purchase, there was also a general plan that was adopted by the residents and ratified by the residents and adopted by council in '21. So can you elaborate on why the general plan that we have developed with an economic development base that supports the airport and the impetus of economic development around the airport should be modified three years after, actually, two years after it was ratified?
Sure. As you well know, your work at City of Tempe focuses heavily on general plans and has for more than a general plan, probably a couple of decades. General plans look out to the future. I'm not going to repeat everything that's in our application. I'm sure you've read it. But in short, this is about economic development. And what's changed for us significantly since 2020 is, and not immediately, but 2020 was COVID. If anyone is living the same way after COVID that they were before, I'm shocked because no one I know is. That's true in almost every facet of life. The last several years has seen a significant change in the way land gets used. I wouldn't think anyone would think about building an office building today in the way they would have been, say, 2019. They would be, I can't imagine what would happen to that person. It wouldn't be good. Office isn't the same as it used to be. It certainly isn't for us. The way people live isn't the same as it used to be. It certainly isn't for us. I can't think of a time in my life that the world has changed more and that land use has changed more than since COVID, since that time.
But in that regard, it has enabled employees to live in Fiji and work remotely.
Sure, for some.
What is the-
For sure, for some, not necessarily for law enforcement, but yeah.
We have additional housing within the area that's going in. I guess I'd like a little more information on why the housing that's going in can't meet the needs and that we don't have to have it tonight.
I'm happy to answer some of it now. I'm happy to address it more later. But it goes back to what I said earlier, which is you're hoping that many of these units get built. Some will, some won't. Can't imagine how many times in Tempe as a planner you've seen the same piece of property. Some of them probably at least a half dozen times or more before they get built. Some of these things will get built, some won't. Some will get built on a different timeline, some won't. Some will have a mix of uses so that they can be leased to people for short term and for long term, which are needs of ours, special needs. We have some employees in the tech industry who specialize in certain things. For example, when we worked on the body camera, we brought in a team from Bose. They didn't come here for a long period of time. They specialize in doing what they do. They come for a while and they leave. That kind of housing certainly isn't available now. And so we're not anxious to allow or to depend on somebody else to fill this need. If we're going to grow, we're going to make sure that we're in control of that destiny. And we think lots of the units that you're talking about probably never get built or don't get built in the way that they're currently proposed, or don't get built for a really long time, or get built much further away. And so everybody has to drive through the city, which gets back to the traffic issue.
Thank you. I guess one of my concerns is the potentially speculative nature and the fact that the rezoning is for about 63% of the total land area. And I am fully in support of the hotel. And if you wanted to do extended stay hotel to accommodate employees that came in temporarily for, you know, a 30-day or 60-day stay, I think that would work. And I love the idea of a synergy of a campus because I think that's important in any of the tech industries. But I do have concerns about the speculative nature of 63% of this landmass that was set aside for commercial uses in an area that the airport wants to see commercial industrial uses being turned over for housing. So that's, that is a concern I have. And in any case where there's an entitlement, there is the chance of it not happening. And then the next entitlement that comes in with the value increase in land, from my experience, means the density goes up in order to justify the purchase of property. So that would be another concern I would have if it's not being built in a timely manner specific to your needs. Thank you.
Vice Chair Young.
Thank you, Chair Higgs. Mr. Quamantel, I hope I pronounced your name correctly.
It is the least of my concerns.
There's a lot that went into this project. We haven't had a packet this thick in quite a while. You know, going back to the conversation at the beginning of our comments that Commissioner Serena brought up about the zoning map and some of the background that your expert kind of gave us as well, you know, it seems like the ring kept getting tighter and tighter on this parcel and more and more restrictive. I've seen a lot of zoning master plans. I very rarely see prohibited on them. You know, we'll see different land uses in various places on a zoning master plan where there is an ability to make zoning adjustments. Prohibited, to me, is a pretty definitive word, and there was probably a reason for that. I don't know all the background on how that came to be, why this, I mean, there's a history on it, and I think that we need to know more about that.
Vice Chair Young, if I, if I may, I'd like to provide some clarification on that. The prohibition that you speak to is a general, more of a general plan issue than a zoning issue. The PCP zoning isn't necessarily prohibited on this site as long as they go through the process to get it approved. The reason the PCP is prohibited is because the general plan presently doesn't allow it. Now, they're trying to amend that as part of this application. So I just wanted to make sure that that was clear.
Yeah, no, I understand that. But prohibited is a pretty definitive word, and it's pretty clear to me what it means. You know, I don't really have any questions per se. I think a lot of my questions have already been answered by some of the other commissioners' questions and the feedback we've received. I'm hearing there's problems with water. There's problems with sewer. There's problems with traffic. You know, we've got 2,000-plus or minus multifamily units, a 400-plus key hotel. This is not a small project by any means. And as Commissioner Otte said, this one definitely has some hair on it. And I think it's going to require some more thought. Speaking to your points about the amenities, it's appreciated, but I think of something of this magnitude, those are very similar amenities that we see on a lot of multifamily projects here. And I think that because this is such a big ask, there needs to be a better effort and provisions for, that are in proportion with this ask. So I think everybody up here has already spoken. I won't delay the inevitable. I'll just make a motion that there's still some- Oh, all right. I'll wait for that. But yeah, I'm having some concerns about this project, and I think we all kind of know where this is going, and we'll probably see this one again. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Yes. Again, I'm a little conflicted. I'm kind of on the fence on everything also because there's so much, so many pieces to this. And this is such an important piece of Scottsdale that has to be resolved one way or another, whether it's Axon or anybody else. Whatever goes into that parcel or those pieces is going to be substantial. There's no doubt about that. This is an important part of Scottsdale that we have to make a decision on. Not only is it because of the impact of the residential part, but also the impact to the airport and also the impact to employment. This, this part of Scottsdale is going to be a tech center area. That's already kind of given, a given with Crackerjacks and a couple other major players in the area. We need to see, really seek out a real good solution on this. So my motion is right now to have a continuance on this so that we can get more information to make a real rational decision on this. I think it's very important to see that we're making the right decisions, and we just don't have enough of the data overall, whether it be the water concerns or the traffic concerns or anything else like that. It's just too important to just say yes or no based on just what we, what the data we have supporting now. So my motion is to have a continuance on this.
Are you looking for February 14th, Statehood Day?
I'm not going to make that decision. I would let the commissioners or whatever staff says the best way to handle that continuance would be, what, they know the schedule better than I do. I would just encourage that everybody has a good rethink on everything and get together and have more absolute answers to this, to this problem before we make a final decision on it.
I know Commissioner Otte still wanted to say something.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Yeah, one thing that I had wanted to mention that really doesn't go to the applicant, but at a previous meeting, Commissioner Serena said we should know what a development's potential impact is on fire and police response. And in this write-up, it simply said, well, you know, the police department and the fire department, they budget accordingly. That really doesn't tell us what the impact is from a development. And in this case, it might be easy. The fire station supposedly is going to be up before the building is, the buildings are. But still, I would strongly encourage staff to start including in these write-ups the impact of development on response time, kind of like, you know, Phil has with levels of service on, on intersection and segments. You know, if we could have some sort of indication as to, okay, it's going to degrade response time of police, degrade response time of fire by two seconds or 20 minutes, you know, something like that. Anyway, I would like to see something like that. Commissioner Kaminski talked about employment preferences, and she covered that very well. But I would like to ask, are any of these apartments going to be reserved for employees only? Or do you open up to employees and then at that point, open it up to the public and anybody can come in and those employees no longer, or they would have to wait for somebody to move out? How does that going to work?
We'll discuss that more in the next meeting, but our intent is that the first priority be Axon employees.
Okay, but would some be reserved so that-
Yes.
Okay, okay. Noise issue, I'll let that go. You did mention benefits to the, to the community. I don't know that you explicitly said, we're going to pay taxes, but my guess is-
We'd love to find a way to otherwise, but we fully expect to pay taxes. We've made that request before. It didn't go over well, so.
I do appreciate that you did shorten the building down there on the south side so that there's less of an impact on, on the residents down there. That's, you know, three is a lot better than five. Two might be even better. But anyway, people from the community had commented on property rights, that they have property rights. I would say you have property rights. But it's all subject to what can the city's infrastructure support. You may have rights to do something, but we may not have the ability to accommodate that. So, you know, that's where we come in, I guess, and have to think about that. But I believe that Commissioner Young wanted to make a motion, or maybe Commissioner Gonzalez wanted to make a motion to continue.
Commissioner Gonzalez sort of alluded to a- Commissioner Gonzalez sort of alluded to a, a motion, but I'll go ahead and formalize it. Let's see. We are numbers three and four here.
Yeah, can we, I think Commissioner Kaminsky had one last thing.
Yeah, of course.
This was related to timing. I know there's a desire to get this on the next agenda, but my concern is with the number of things that we are going to be looking at, the public that may be interested in reviewing it, the staff that has to write a report. I'm not sure a two-week continuance is sufficient.
Our request is two weeks, and I would suggest that, that's appropriate. And if, if it looks like we're not going to make that, then that can always be continued again, as I think you did in another case this evening.
Chair Higgs and Commissioner Kaminsky and Vice Chair Young, to your motion. In this case, there's a three-week separation between tonight and the 14th, so that helps us a bit, but we definitely appreciate your attention and your concern about staff pumping this thing out in two weeks. But three weeks gives us a lot more hope, so we would suggest a date certain to February 14th. Thank you.
All right, very good. Well, with that, I would like to make a motion for continuance of Cases 3 GP 2023 Axon and Case 13 ZN 2020, number two Axon, to the February 14th Planning Commission meeting.
Second.
Okay, so we have a, a motion from Vice Chair Young and a second from Commissioner Ortell. Roll call vote, please.
Chair Higgs?
Yes.
Vice Chair Young?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Kaminsky?
Yes.
Commissioner Ortell?
Yes.
Commissioner Scarborough?
Yes.
Commissioner Serena?
No.
Motion passes six, one. Thank you.
Thank you. See you in three weeks.
Thank you. I believe everyone's here mostly for that case. We do still have a few, two agenda items, presentations from staff, but we're going to take a five-minute break to use the restroom or whatever might be needed by everyone.